We will officially begin our evening tonight. Thank you all so much for coming to the Chambers Meet the Candidates night. We are going to start with the candidates for school board, as you can see, they're seated here. And I'm going to turn everything over to our moderator Luke Rio, who will be explaining the rules, asking the questions, and I will retire to the audience to be the official timekeeper. So, without further ado, here you go, Luke.
Well, thank you and welcome to the Candidates Forum tonight. This is going to be pretty relaxed, I think, but here's the rules, Jim Come. We're going to go through about five or six questions. Everybody will have two minutes to answer the questions. And we're going to start with an opening statement. You'll have two minutes to give your opening statement. We'll go through the questions and then you'll have a two-minute period to close your comments. You don't have to use the entire two minutes, but you have two minutes. We ask that everybody holds the microphone so we can get good sound of you guys and we can use that against you in the fall. So, no, we want to thank you guys for coming out. Anytime you can get this number of people to run for school board or city council, it's a fantastic thing and wish you guys the best. So, we'll start tonight with the opening statements and we're going to start with Mr. Dwight Propper.
Hello, my name's Dwight Propper. I've been on a school board here for 16 years. I have never worked for a school board. I'm not a certified teacher or educator, but I think that all of us are learners, students, and teachers all of our life. I do support that. My background is I went to high school and college and went on the road with a rock band for a while, then got into Wendy's Restaurants, got into operating three of them in northwest Pennsylvania. And then I retired from that and I've been working on an algorithm to teach my wife why our family fortune is dwindling. No, that's a feeble attempt at humor, but I am very interested in education, in public education, supporting it in the Commonwealth and here in Titusville. I think we have a very good system right now in Titusville and I hope that we can continue that. I guess my time is up. Oh, you waved, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Would you like that time back?
That was only--
No, sir. No?
Hello, my name's Kevin O'Neil. Well, by my background, I was born in Titusville, came back here in my late twenties to work with my father, met my lovely wife, we raised four children, gone through here, through St. Titus School in the elementary and also then through the Titusville High School system. Been working in, you know, since I've been here, working in retail and the steel industry. In the last 25 years, I've been in the hardwood lumber industry, out behind Choice Wood Plant out there, behind Walmart, been in sales and production, been a buyer, and now I'm the plant manager at Choice Wood. Through the years, I've been taught by my family and former bosses, you've got to give back to the community and that's part of what you do when you join organizations and you do different things like, you know, you join the J.C.'s where you learn to lead. I met a young man like this in the J.C.'s, you know, down in Clarion. You get on boards like the C.A.C. Board and you're on groups like Knights of Columbus, which I'm in. So, it gives you a time to, you know, give back to the community and that's one of the reasons I wanted to be on the school board. Been on the school board now for close to eight years, been serving on the tax and finance committee, negotiations and policy. Feel I've kind of been an integral part in negotiating a couple of contracts amicably, but also we made inroads into things like healthcare and the salary schedules and things like that. So, I've enjoyed working with the board, especially with Karen and Sean, and I'd like your vote to continue on for the next four years because there's still a lot to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jake Jones. To start out with, I graduated from Titusville here in 2000. I graduated from Penn State in 2005. From there, I've kind of worked in the industry of sales, the ag and turf industry, and then eventually settled down here in Waterford, working for Troyer Grower Supply, where I managed a retail outlet in the ag industry as well as manage the large farm where we, you know, we grew a lot of corn, potatoes, and just basic row crops. So, I managed not only the farm but a trucking organization with that. From there, I decided I wanted to try a little something different and I've taken a job here with Micogen Seed, which is a branch out of Dow Chemical, and I've been with that company since 2014. I oversee a pretty large area as an area sales manager. I work with a dealer network as well as with the actual farms, whether it's farm managers, owners, not only here locally but throughout Ohio and in western New York. So, I think what I bring to the, you know, what I feel I can bring to this is, you know, my wife and I moved back to the area. We have two small children and we like to, we like to think of ourselves as pretty fiscally responsible, conservative. We like to think things through. My wife and I are very budget oriented and I think those are some things I can bring to the school board. You know, I think as you look at the school district, one of the reasons we moved back here is we've heard great things about Hightown and so we wanted to be involved in that and, you know, for me personally, I want to continue to see that kind of stuff. I think that's great to have a reputation around not only, you know, Crawford County but all of Pennsylvania that, you know, you have a school district that's really doing some unique things. And so, I think with that, my time's up, but I do ask for your vote. Thank you.
How will you tell us when our time is up?
No.
[laughing].
Depends on you. All right.
Good evening. I'm really excited to be here this evening. My name is Charlene Eggleston, but most folks just call me Shar. So, on the ballot, you'll see it as Charlene, but please feel free to call me Shar. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in the Titusville area for 29 years and we have two children, Amanda Enright and Ryan Eggleston. We also have eight grandchildren, four in the Pittsburgh area and four who attend the Titusville School District schools and they also participate in the extracurricular activities. My background is in education. I have 25 years in education. I have a bachelor's of arts in comprehensive English from Edinburgh University. I also have a master's in curriculum and instruction from Gannon University. I've been the department chair at Youngsville High School the entire time I taught there. I've also been an adjunct professor for Clarion University and the University of Pitt at Bradford. On the administrative, excuse me, on the administrative side, I have been a curriculum specialist for grades K through 12 and that would be in language arts, helping to write that curriculum. Also, a curriculum coordinator for the Warren County School District in language arts for grades K through 12 and also a Warren County School District teaching coach. So, now that I'm retired, I want to give back to my community of Titusville. When my children were young, I also had the opportunities to work at the Titusville Harold, the Derrick. I was an advertising manager for Levinson Brothers in Warren and a territorial manager for Cellular One. I'm running for school board because I have the time to devote to that good cause. And I said before, I want to give back to my community. My vision is for student success and I look forward to the challenges. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Kressman and I am a retired English teacher from the Titusville School District, having taught for 37 years. And as I look up and down the table, I've had all of your kids. You're a pedicure director. So, yeah, yeah, you all look real familiar. Why am I running? I'm running because I liked school. I liked school when I was a student and I liked being a teacher as well. And so, what I hope is that I can do something on this board that makes our students and our employees like school at least half as much as I have over the years. I'm also running because it's a responsibility to be on the school board and it takes a lot of time. And as Shar says, one of the things retirees have is time and believe me, you'll use it. You'll use it. And I think the last thing as far as why I'm running is because I really like kids. I really do. And I want to see the best things for them. And so, with that, I pass the mic to--
Hello, my name is Jim Come. I graduated from Titusville High School in 1977, went to Edinburgh University. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree there. I've utilized that throughout my whole entire career as a teacher, athletic director, athletic trainer, coach, worked all kinds of facets with tutoring. As Mrs. Kressman said, it's all about the kids and that's why we're here. Just about, I don't know, 20 years ago or so, there was a group in town that was called People for Progress. And back then, there were a lot of people that stepped up to work for the community and run for city council, run for school board, run for a whole bunch of different things. And I, as 20 years younger, I started to learn what it's all about to give back to your community. Since then, I've been on the Titusville Planning Commission. I serve on the Titusville Redevelopment Board. I'm on our Alumni Association. I just want to give back to our community. I believe that's what it's all about.
And Mr. Come, you can hold on to the mic because the first question will come to you. And I think you would all agree that it's a great thing to serve on a school board or city council, but a lot of times our hands get tied with federal and state regulations. Titusville isn't immune to issues with the state budget, although ours is manageable. We know folks like Pencrest and Erie are struggling with some major issues. So, the question, the first question tonight is, what in your opinion should, could the federal and state governments do to help ease the budget-making concerns?
Well, Luke, that's a pretty loaded question. After sitting at the school board meeting last night and watching them go through the budget process, which I have, you know, I've been at a lot of board meetings where they have done that, I think that the federal government has a responsibility towards IEPs, students with, that are gifted, students that have disabilities. And the federal government, I don't believe, is holding up their bargain that they were supposed to years and years ago and fund those situations. At the state level, I think that there's an awful lot of regard sent to charter schools, cyber schools. Money goes towards that. I'm not so against school choice. I believe that's okay as long as the playing field is level. And I don't believe that it is. Those that are in some of these charter schools and private schools don't have to go with all the unfunded mandates that school districts have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. If they're going to have a mandate, I believe the state government should fund that. They do not. They currently don't on several different things. Charter and cyber school legislation is one of those things that would probably stick out more than any. We have to transport kids to charter cyber schools. We have to transport kids to Erie, to all over for their needs, which is okay. But I think the federal and state government should, should hold a responsibility that if they're going to mandate such programs, that they should fund those programs also.
I agree with everything that Jim has said and I'm not going to say it again, but then in a nutshell, it's unfunded mandates, which are very difficult for, for all districts. So--
And so, would you repeat the question again, please?
What in your opinion should, could the federal and state governments do to ease budget-making concerns?
Okay, thank you, Luke. What a wonderful question because school finances are a very big topic when it comes to taxpayers, when it comes to what we're going to do in the schools. And we look to the federal government right now and what our president's going to do and it looks as if everything may come back to the state. We know that 8% is approximately what we get from the federal funds and 56% from the local funds and then 36 from the state. So, we're looking though, when we look at the state, we're looking at arbitrary, excuse me, I think I am a little bit nervous tonight, arbitrary funding. And so, we need a clear understanding of what's coming through from the state and then to decide what our priorities are as a district and as a board. And we need to do that for our taxpayers and for our parents and for the community and actually for the students. So, I'm anxious to see what legislation will come down and also what the Supreme Courts will do and also what our president will do.
So, I think first I'd like to say, I'm really glad I didn't have to answer that first. Good job, Mr. Come. Really glad you tackled that one first. So, when those kind of questions come up, I always go back to the idea of simplicity, keep things simple. And I think the word that comes to mind on this is transparency. So, if you have a, and I think that's kind of what everybody else is kind of getting at here, is if you have a transparent vision or a direction that the school board wants to head, that allows for budgets. So, again, I always bring things back to, you know, when I was managing a business or the district that I do now, I'm always looking, you know, two years, three years down the road. Where are we going to be five years down the road? And I think that, granted, we can't control when a state budget doesn't want to get passed for what, 15 months overdue? Like, that's something you can't, you can't, obviously you can't plan for. But I think the key to any budget, whether that's in your house or in the school district, is planning and being prepared for where you want to go and what you want to do. So, I think with that, I'll kind of wrap it up, but I think transparency and planning is really, is really the key as you look at, at a budget.
I think what the federal government can do is just get out of our way, okay? Let the states decide what's best for their states. Again, Jim mentioned unfunded mandates. They put these things in, but they don't give us funds to do that. Just little things like, you want to make people happy, make the kids happy? Let them have more cheese and pizza, okay? I mean, you get down into what we're going to feed every kid every day and I know you have to watch what they're eating, but, you know, when you see how much gets thrown away because there's things they don't want to eat, but they've got to take it and it just seems like such a waste. And that's part of your federal thing. With it comes to the state, I think the biggest thing we need there is, we've all got to talk to our legislators. I mean, I'm not picking on Peasers, but I'm just saying that's our biggest, one of our biggest, well, it is our biggest line item pretty much in the budget anymore. And they need to be making some changes in that, whether it's going forward and for the next, look forward 50 years or whatever, but you've got to make different classes. We cannot continue to have a defined benefit program, you know, down the road. It's just, it's just going to bankrupt us all. And nothing wrong with what the teachers and stuff have done. They've made, they've done their part of it. They've, they've lived up to their side of the deal, but the state has just made some really bad decisions over the last 15, 20 years.
Ditto to everything you just heard. I mean, I agree with what's said. The federal government is, is starting to want to leave us with an unpredictable income. They're trying to eliminate, in my mind, the federal government is trying to get out of education, as someone said, and push it back to the schools. And I think that's where the federal are going to do and just give it to the state and then it'll be divvied out that way to the counties and these sorts of things. I think that's the future of education and I think we have to continue to discuss that with our federal and our state legislators. Now, as far as, I'm just going to put a pitch in to call your legislator about Act 97, the charter cyber school bill that's being debated right now. It doesn't take care of the unlevel funding. It doesn't take care of the different responsibilities that are in that law, even the new one, that are to an advantage of the for-profit schools against the public education that we provide. I do agree that the Peasor system, while it became a problem 10 years ago, it still isn't fixed. With the number of legislators we have in our Commonwealth, it should be fixed. If they're not efficient enough, perhaps we need to cut that. We have, as a lot of people here know, have right-sized our district with employees. I think our Commonwealth needs to do that too. You've got too many opinions, you know? Try to get 15 people to come to a consensus, try to get 300 to come to a consensus and we're having that problem. So, I agree that all the unfunded mandates, I could talk about transportation, all those things, but I think the thing is we have to pay people to work here. We still have some laws on the books that are, that are antiquated to labor laws that we have to live with and, but I still think we take care of our people, but we have to make sure that the expectation of an annual raise may not continue in their future and it may be what breaks public education. I hope that's not the truth. Thank you.
You're going to get the next question, so--
All right.
Should you find a seat on school board in the new year? What are your priorities for the district? Why and how did you select these priorities?
My priorities for the district will be, once again, to continue the, as someone said, the long-range planning that we have implemented in the last 12, 15 years that I didn't recognize when I first came here that maybe were or were not visible to a seated school board member. I want to continue to plan for the future and to use our resources and our resources, our people and technology and things, and use them in the right ways and make sure that we continue that sort of thing and to make sure that we are truly, truly gaining the students' desire for education. Not just throwing it out there, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but that we are reaching those students that come from three or four generations of poverty, have never seen anybody go to work. And if all we want to do is roll our eyes or let them go, we're missing the point of public education. There's a lot of kids out here that struggle and if we want to have, so we don't have to have gated communities in our, in Titusville, we have to get these people to realize they have to go to work. They can't just take opioids and lay around all day. They need to go to work and that's something that we need to demonstrate and model to them so that they, and I know we address it, we spend an awful lot of money on special education and students, but if that's what they need, then we need to give it to them. We need to reach the students, as we all are saying, it's all about the kids.
Tough act to follow there. Some of the things I'm looking forward down the road is to continue looking at budgets, to continue looking at our facilities, whether it be our buildings, whether it be our fields, whether it be the track we're talking about, trying to keep things up that are good facilities for our kids. We have some situations where down the road, are we going to be right-sized? Do we, will we need three elementary schools down the road? I mean, our numbers are dwindling each year. We're getting less and less. Is that right? We just have to look that and if we do, plan for it properly. We've put over the last, I mean, especially with our business manager, over the last eight, 10, 15 years, we've been able to set aside extra money for things like, you know, so we're not getting pulled budget with Peasers. But also, we have, and I have to make a comment here, I think we have one of the best buildings and grounds directors in our, in the area. John Cowan does a great job forecasting what we've got to do. We have a plan for what we're going to do next year, three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, whether we need a new roof on this building and this and that. We've got to keep our structures up. Again, some of the programming, you know, Jake mentioned earlier, again, I want to see it go through. I want to keep it forward through is MCL, which is Mass Customized Learning, which we're doing out at Hightown. I'd like to see that moving forward in a proper timeframe, not pushing it through, but working with it and seeing how that can develop over the next two, three, four, or five years.
So, to answer your question, I have no preset agendas, quite honestly. I have nothing that I, I'm complaining about. I think our school district's doing a nice job, quite honestly. With that being said, the things that I look at is I look at, you know, what's the next generation going to need to be successful, whether that's trade schools, colleges, alternative educations like this Hightown program. I want to be part of that. I want to make sure that we are, we are putting kids in the right position. I will, I will probably be the first person to tell you, I do not believe every child needs to go to college. I don't think that needs to be forced. And honestly, I don't think we need to entrench kids in elementary school that is the way you have to do. I'd like to see agriculture be a part of our education system. I look at what we're doing in the industry that I'm in and honestly, when I was in high school, I had no idea. I had no idea what I was getting into. You know, there's, there's a lot of things, Hot Topic right now, you know, GMO. There's probably not too many people sitting in this room that could understand what that means. I'm in an industry that we're, we're doing this every day and we're dealing with the safety, we're dealing with universities and I don't think kids have even a clue that that's out there. I look at electricians, I look at, you know, these trades, welding, you know? We're only going to create cooler designs, newer buildings, newer infrastructures. So, are we preparing our kids to be prepared to go into that workforce? And honestly, I think we're doing a good job. I commend the people that are on the board right now. I think we're doing a good job. I think we're doing that. I think that, but we can always get better. I think new ideas are always key. So, the board's doing a nice job. They'll never move ahead without new ideas, new youth, new people that, that want to bring ideas to the table. So, with that, I'll wrap it up.
I am a person who believes in research. I like to research topics and find solutions. So, one of the reasons that I want to be on this board is to do just that. I believe that sometimes we, we go off in different areas and we haven't really researched the topic and as a result, that could actually end up in a disaster. So, I want to use my research skills and looking forward to the Hightown project and the idea that students really need that intrinsic self-motivation. When I was in Warren County, I know for the elementary grades K through eight, we had checklists and they had to master the information in order to move on. And there is a lot going on now with that idea of mastery. I know that, and I'll just use my grandchildren for an example, I have two twin boys who have skills in math and because of that, they are taking Algebra I concepts in sixth grade. Well, that was pretty unheard of when I was going to school. But again, if you've mastered it, you really should be able to move on. I also believe in project-based learning. I wish we would do more and perhaps we do. I don't have any idea of what's going on per se, but I like hands-on learning. I'm very impressed with the Vo-Tec. I also am, I would like to be part of that way in which students can gain credits from high school years and attending college while they are in high school. I feel that the district is doing an exceptional job. I feel that my children were well-prepared for college and also for the workforce. My grandchildren are. We have excellent educators. We have wonderful administrators and I'm really proud to be running for school board because of this district. Thank you.
As I think of priorities for the district, I think ongoing fiscal responsibility is very important. Previous boards have been very careful about money management, which means that we can do a lot of things today that other districts cannot. So, that would be an ongoing priority. I also think that when we are taking a look at new curriculum, new ideas in curriculum, that we need to study them very carefully and introduce them just as carefully. I think perhaps for me, the most important thing is the problem we have today with work ethic in our students. I think that is something that we have to address more, more completely and may need to start earlier with our students, but I see that as a growing problem with high school students and it moves on downward as well. So, my number one priority would be to see if we couldn't improve the motivation of students in our school system.
Several years ago, maybe eight years ago, our school district was, and standard and pores, was determined to be a school district that beats the odds. I believe that. I'm a product of that. You know, Mr. Propper had stated something about coming from, from a poor home and having a work ethic and all of that. It was taught that. It was great to have teachers in our district that gave me the thought process of you can do better. And our generation was doing better than our parents. It would be my hope that one of our priorities is that we would instill upon the students of our school district, that we want them too to be able to do better than what their parents did. And we need to provide professional development for our staff that keeps them up to speed with those things that they need to prepare the students with what they need. I do think our school board has done a phenomenal job with that over time and I would hope that as a school board member that I could continue that. that, as a school board member, that I could continue that. Also, as many of the people here have stated, that we need to provide the students with their needs. Their needs have changed. They have completely different things in their world. Social media and all those things that come at them are things that many of us didn't grow up with, and we need to understand their world and how to get those things across to them that we think are important and speak their language. That would be one of my priorities. We have to provide curriculum that meets the needs of whatever society brings to us over the next five to 10 years. Our district, again, last night at the board meeting, they're bringing in technology for what our students need. Absolutely, we'll want to continue to do that for the future students of our district. Plan curriculum K to 12. Am I, I'm good? Okay, plan curriculum K to 12. Thank you.
I was wanting to hear more. And Mrs. Christman will get the next question while the mic's down that way. Speaking of technology, let's continue on this path. What are some of the positives and negatives with technology? Has it affected how the kids interact in school? You know, this thought of, you hate to say, kids being lazy today. I think the times are different. I think technology has probably played a role in that. So what are some of the positives? What are the negatives? And what's the role as a parent? I know myself, I have three kids, they come home with homework, and I'm just staring at them, because it's, I mean, it's pretty advanced for the grades they're in. So what role do parents have in the whole development of children in our community? I just threw a lot at you, so...
I was going to say, I'll be with you in a minute.
Yes. We're going to take a quick intermission. We'll be back in five minutes.
I don't know that I'll answer all of this question. I'll leave some for somebody else.
Sure.
There certainly are positives and negatives, and as I look at Mr. Technology out there, but we agree on a lot of things. Technology is a tool. Is that, do I have that right, Mr. Frye? Technology is a tool, and it needs to be balanced. We do, technology is wonderful. It speeds up so many things, and we can do so many things because of it. So there's no doubt that we absolutely have to teach it, we have to use it, but it does have its downsides. And trying to teach students the dangers of the internet is a real task. They don't understand. They don't understand. And I don't know how we do that exactly, but it has to be an ongoing discussion because there are dangers out there, and the kids are very, I mean, the kids are so quick. You know, I'm sure your little guys are teaching you a few things about the technology as well. And that's the way with the high school students, they know how to use it all. So there are positives and negatives, there's no doubt, but we have to keep up teaching them about what is out there so that they can discern between the good and the bad. In terms of effects on kids, well, you see fewer kids in the parks because they're at home playing on their technology. So yes, it has effects in terms of, you know, physical activity. We see kids sitting, and we don't want them to sit. They do need to be out and moving. I don't know that, in my time at the high school, I saw the social effects in terms of kids not communicating with each other. You do hear that, and I do think it's probably true. I don't know that I honestly saw it at the time I left. I'm going to leave the rules. Oh, good, good. Thank you.
Sorry, it was, yeah, I'm sorry.
Which way am I to go here with this?
Well, technology is definitely here to stay, and I know it cost the Titusville School District about $2,000, no, $205,000 to refresh their technology equipment. I'm all for iPads at the elementary school. I see that a lot in research. That's working very nicely. I see Chromebooks being supplemented in grades six through 12, and I'm in favor of that. I like to see the curriculum drive technology and not the other way around, because I think that both of those are going to be vital for the 21st century, but we still have to have the curriculum in place in order for that technology to foster, and really to grow, okay? I am in favor of STEMS, definitely 100%. I see that happening in some school districts as early as preschool, believe it or not, and would like to have that continued. The effects that I see of technology, while we look around and we all have our phones and so do the kids and everything else, I believe that technology is a tool for in the classroom. I think that teachers and educators need to put down rules that they would abide by in the classroom in order to use that technology. I see a lot of individuals going into that field of technology, and that's going to be where many students have an interest because they play all the video games, and I see them writing programs and building computer games and doing things in the industry. And to be competitive with the other nations, we need to have that technology. As far as parents, I think parenting is a job for the parents, so I leave that completely with the parents. I wish that I could see a little bit more results with technology in the younger grades being given up to read a book. Thank you.
So I guess I might have a little bit of a different perspective than some of the other people at the table tonight, and Luke, you can back me up, but you'll remember when we were in high school, the internet came on a disc, and kids today don't know what we're talking about. So we, you know, I grew up where we brought the internet along, and I do see that, you know, even within the industry that I'm in, you know, we hire, I don't know how many 24-year-old kids every day that come in, whether they're an intern or a full-on employee, and the work ethic isn't there, the drive isn't there. So I do think there is a disconnect from, you know, we can put numbers out there, but if you're between the age of 30 and 40, the internet grew with you. You grew with the internet, you grew with technology. Below that, you just, that's all you've known. So there is a little bit of a disconnect with some of the youth. They don't understand the work ethic behind, so I'll agree with the other people that have talked here. Work ethic has to be first. Technology cannot drive work ethic. It'll never happen that way. That's kind of where I go back to the priority question. I still think the guys that are willing to get their hands dirty will be the ones that are successful. Those are the ones that'll take the technology to the next level. Interestingly enough, today I was having a conversation with a guy, and technology, however you want to phrase it, this summer I'll be using drones in the ag industry. I'll be using drones, crazy. My dad's 60 years old this year, and he asked me, "Where are you going to get that drone so we can scout the fields easier?" So technology's not all bad. None of us have touched on, you know, the implications to the youth and the dangers, and I think that's one of those things that the school district can only do so much. At the end of the day, it's still relying upon the parent, and, you know, it's, at the end of the day, we still have to be parents, we still have to teach our kids what's right and wrong, and I think that's really the key there with technology.
I have different thoughts on this, but basically, would you think about it? Me sitting in an office today, on a little laptop, I can do what 100, you know, clerical clerks did in accounting, you know, 80 years ago. Technology replacing a lot of jobs, and technology's going to replace a lot more jobs. You know, President Trump's talking about bringing jobs back to America. I think that's wonderful, but the fact is, you don't worry about how many more jobs are we going to lose because of robots? The technology's moving so fast. If it's a repetitive job, you're going to have a robot doing it as soon as it costs. You know, we had, out of my mill, we used to have, they had things that they could do, well, it used to cost me $100,000 to put a robot in here. Now it's going to cost me only $30,000, and in 10 years, it's only going to cost me $15,000. We have to worry about that. Technology's good, does a lot of good things. I feel sad, in a way, for all of us. I don't see our kids able to look people in the eye and talk to each other. I don't see us doing that as much anymore. You know, we have to have a time where people can sit down and enjoy a conversation and learn about other people, but we're always looking down, or we're always typing, or we're doing this, and I'm concerned about that. I don't have an answer for it. It scares me. Kids don't know how to have a conversation because it's all sound bites or 140 characters or whatever Twitter is and all that kind of stuff, and that's how they talk. They don't even look at each other. They're all in the same room talking to each other. They won't even say something, they're just texting back and forth. We need to find some time, maybe in school, where you set aside, hey, we have three periods a week where you do nothing but just read a book, and if you're not reading, you can talk to somebody, carry on a conversation. I don't, but it is, it just concerns me. I don't have an answer. I'm frustrated. It's something we have, and it's a tool, like everyone says, but we've got to find ways to let us be more social, like we used to be.
Well, as far as technology, I didn't have a phone in our house until I was nine years old, so, and I'm, don't think I'm that old, I'm 62, but that's just, we lived in a rural area at the time, and that's what was available.
You can't in the street, right?
That's right. No, no, we actually did talk to our neighbors, and we did, because we had to use their phone. No, we talked to, but we talked to our neighbors, then once we got a phone, because we were on a party line. But I think technology is very important, and I think some people have said the right things. Don't let technology drive our education. Make sure that we're using it as a tool, and make sure that we teach the students to be critical thinkers, you know, to recognize fake news or any of that, as I call it, BS. You can call that what you want. Now, I think the critical thinking skills are the hardest to explain to them because I have it right here, it must be true, and we know better than that. And I think, as someone else mentioned, the STEM program, I like it even further where they go in a STEAM program, and the A in the STEAM is arts. And I think some people, and I think we're seeing this through MCL at Hightown, and hopefully it will continue through the district, some students are geared towards that. Some people will do that for a living, and it will open their creativity up, that they may be a scientist, but that they got to use their skills, and when some people thought they maybe were rowdy or, you know, not organized, and they were an artist. They needed to let that out. So I think we need to make sure we take it to STEAM, which goes with our theme for the parade this year, of course, and, but I think it's important with that. And with parents, somebody's got to tell parents to give your kids an expectation. Tell them what you want. Don't beat around the bush. Don't think they're going to hear it somewhere. Say it to them. You will be self-supportive. You will live on your own. You will not live in my basement, and I'm not paying your car insurance when you're 30 years old. I've said those things, and I have a witness in this room that could back me on that. I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right, don't you?
Sorry, Jim.
I agree with, and I'm glad Dwight brought up STEAM. I actually just read an article that came across the email the other day on that, and it adds a component. As a math teacher, if, one of the things, you ask for pros, one of the things that I would love to have been able to do is, I taught geometry for years, three-dimensional objects you can take on a computer and you can, if you want to do surface area and you want to do volume and you want to do all of these things, you can do that on a computer and pull surface area and take a three-dimensional object and pull them, this is a triangle, this is a rectangle, you know, the visualization of those things would be great. And I'm sure every, everyone in education could pick something in their particular subject matter that would be phenomenal with that. Speed of things with Excel and different things are, it's just unreal, the power of those things and what students and you can do in the classroom with those things. Cons, something that I'm really worried about last night at the board meeting when they're talking about moving one-to-one, each student having some kind of a, either an iPad or a Chromebook or something for them to use. What I worry about within our district is the geographic region. You know, you drive five miles out of town, you know, I remember being a teacher and assigning some things that they had to do, you know, when the internet first came out, and there were students in my classroom that I didn't know until if they had the willingness to come up and talk to me and say, "I don't have internet at my house. I have dial-up. I can't do this." You know, and I want to make sure that when we're providing technology to our students, that it's an equal playing field for all of our students. Those that live, you know, out at Beale's Corner Store and those that live in the city of Titusville, making sure they, you know, they're taking a test or an exam or doing an assignment, that they're able to all do that assignment because of where they live and be cognizant of those things for our students. Roll.
Okay, sorry.
And Mrs. Eggleston will get the next question. So we live in a small town, right? Sometimes it seems like we get pretty divided on issues. From the outside, this is an example, the final agreement with the Ed Meyer complex, seemed like it took some time to get finalized. What steps can you take as school board members to maybe better open those lines of communication and enhance relationships with community partners?
Well, first of all, I'm generally not one person just to sit here and give you all the answers. I'd rather be talking to you and the community and the taxpayers and the parents and the students and the people, again, that are in business here, to finding out what you truly need and want. I'm also just one person with some ideas about how I feel, and I know that as a board, we need to collaborate and we need to come to consensus when it deals with student success and with teachers. A lot of things probably will be changing in our community. I've seen that, that happened in the Warren County School District, especially in the Youngsville area, so I understand that. One thing that they did in Youngsville is they formed a group to support public education and to do things, again, that would help the students in their area. That organization's called Roy, and I was a member of that, and I think that was very beneficial. I guess the whole thing is keeping the lines of communication open, being able to talk. Sometimes people can't talk, and they're going to text, or they're going to send you an email, and that's fine, too. Please, I look forward to that, and I promise you that I'll get back to you with an answer. I'm good, as I said before, with research, looking things up, finding out answers. I've taken several notes for tonight because I want to be accurate in what I tell and what I find, and also that research, as I said before, drives a lot of things. But the best thing is to be open, and some things we're all going to like and some things we're all going to dislike, and that's the way the world goes. And we have a lot of issues right here at home involving the Ed Meyer complex, for example, and education, the technology, and I look forward, again, come on over, have a cup of coffee with me if you'd like.
Yeah, I think, really, simply put, I think, you know, there's got to be a way of, a forum that people can out, you know, either they come to an event like tonight where, you know, you can actually sit and listen, or you can watch, but there's got to be some way where people can feel like they're getting an accurate reading on the community. Again, that's part of that whole technology thing. I think, you know, 10 years ago, a newspaper was in everybody's house, and now it's a little bit of a challenge making sure everybody is up to speed on what's going on. I think anytime that it comes back to the education or the students, the key's always got to be that the school board, the district, the teachers, whatever, are as transparent and as clear on their point or their views or where they want to go as they can to the community. And I know that's pretty vague, but I think that's about as good as you can ask as a school board of yourself, is to make sure that if a member or a parent within the community is looking for an answer, they have an avenue to find it. And I think that that's the only thing that you can do, is just make sure you have an avenue that's open.
Growing up in Titusville, I was, and I'd moved away, and I didn't realize all the things that Titusville had and some of the wonderful things that they had. Growing up, we had Little League, we had this, we had that. We had a guy named Ed Meyer, okay? Ed Meyer worked for the school district. School district paid his salary, the city paid for this, the city did this. We had very good working relationships, and it was just, I went to other towns, they, no one ever thought of that, that you had that collaboration, and we started to lose that. And I believe the school district is one of the, there's some predecessors on the board who said, "Let's get out of this. Why are we spending money on that? That's not education." I believe we should be doing anything we can do and take on, and I'll spend taxpayer money. I believe we should be doing things to keep our kids enriched, to keep them active, and if it means we have to spend money, it maybe not be for education, but it keeps... the sports going, it keeps young kids playing sports, getting out there, playing baseball. I think we should, that should be part of our job. I'm willing to take on the whole Ed Meyer complex. I'd like us to see us own the Ed Meyer complex. I think it's, we can move with it. It's not a cost to the city. We could take it over. That's just my opinion, that my fellow school members may not agree with me, but I think that's something that I'd love to see done. You know, we have a right to keep, not a right, we have a, I think, a challenge to do that, and make things better for our community. And I think the school district has, can be the leader in that, offering our buildings out for different programs. If someone wants to use it to have a, you know, an exercise class, you know, we have that opportunity, you know? I don't like to see us closing the school buildings up. Your taxpayer money built these buildings. You should be able to use them. Your different organizations should be able to use them. So, I think that's one of the ways we can do it.
Well, I want to echo Kevin on that, and to, you realize what goes on is, as we get older, we don't have kids in school, and so we don't want you spending our tax dollars on those damn kids anymore. Well, guess what? They're our kids. They're your kids. They're our neighbors. And I agree with that. And one of the things that, to go back to, that you referenced perhaps, it took a long time to get a communication, or an agreement on the Ed Meyer complex. I think from the inside, there was a lot of poor communication, miscommunication, and people didn't read contracts and things, and left it up to one person to represent them, or two people. And then, our community of Titusville, if there's a descending voice, by gosh, there's an awful lot of problem here. Well, there should be descending voices on most things, so that you can have another view on things. We can't all agree on everything. And sometimes we learn from people who think a different way. But I also agree that we need to take care of kids and give them opportunities. You know, sitting in their, in their room playing computer, they're going to end up with my physique. And we don't want that to happen to them. You know, I've done it to myself with overeating food, and lack of exercise. I'll be honest with it. But I don't want our kids to be that way, too, because I am paying the bill for the insurance, and the healthcare that I have to do from that. But again, make sure that you're communicating honestly and openly when you're talking with people. Don't beat around the bush. Don't imply that, oh, you should have known what I meant. No, be direct. Tell us what you mean. Some of us aren't, may not be as educated, or as intelligent, to read between your lines. So please be direct. Not everyone grew up in Titusville, and knows the history of every program here. So we have to be able to share that, and accept people that bring a new idea to that. So again, open communication, and honest communication, and taking care of our community.
You're up. Yes.
I don't think it would be prudent for any of us sitting here that are about to dive into political office, to criticize anything that anyone has done up to this point in time. I think that we need to work forward, and work together. The Ed Meyer complex, the Titusville user services, Kevin, I'm right there with you. We had the luxury, growing up in town, to have that whole programming that is now passed, and it's incredibly unfortunate. I would 100% support any funding to go into that for not only our students. It was way bigger than that. It was from birth to however old you want to get. There were so many programs that went with that. Many of them are still there. Many of the things within our community, you know, the YMCA, Titusville Summer Theater is still there, Council of the Arts, there were so many things, and that's just a very small venture of an enormous project. We just need to get in a room and talk. Attorneys don't need to be involved. We, the people of our own community, need to be in the room, and we need to talk, and we need to work things out. And I wholeheartedly think that that's what we can do. When I first started this stuff, when we talked a little bit earlier about me being on the Titusville Planning Commission, I remember several people in the room, we were down at the middle school. One of the big things was, take the Titusville Area School District as a whole, Oil Creek Township, Cherry Tree, you know, Vanango County, Crawford, all of us. We sat in a room down there with all of the people that were in positions that could help our area. Let's all work together. Let's get those people back together. Let's talk as a group. Let's talk with a common goal. And if we do that, nothing but positive can occur.
Very simply, I picked up the phone and talked to Don Frazier on the phone. It works, doesn't it, Don? The phone. Yes. It's called Talk to Somebody. That's it.
All right. Jake will get the next question. And then, once we go through, we'll do intermission, and then we'll do the second segment as soon as we take a 10-minute break. I'm joking. No, we're almost done. All right. Not meant to be a trick question by any means, but your role on school board, do you see yourself as a representative of the community, or a representative of the school district?
Both. We can make this one short, yeah. I mean, we're representing both. I mean, we have to see what's best for the district and the people, but the district is the people. You know, I mean, we're representing all of our families, and so we look, we want to hear input. People want to talk to us, give us a call, talk to us, what's on your mind. We're trying to make the best decisions we can make, based on what we know. You know, and if we don't know what your issues are, we'll work with the issues that are in front of us, and try and make the best decisions that are put forth in front of us.
Once again, ditto. I represent our school district across the Commonwealth, on a couple of different boards and things. And I feel the community, maybe I'm wrong in this, is the district, and, you know, all the way out to almost to Spartansburg, you know, and Grand Valley. Those are our people, too. That's part of the district. And we need to be accepting and take them in. And while I'm here to make sure that, you know, and I've expressed it before, that our employees should be well-taken care of, well-taken care of is a relative thing. It's in the eye of the beholder. What do I think is the right way? I just voted for a major contract, and I've taken some heat in our community and across the region for the increases, but we've got, we got a fair and equitable deal this time, and that's why I voted for it. And I, once again, I go to, I go to meetings around town, I go, I shop around town, and people are in my ear, hey, Proper, how about, you know, how about those taxes? How about, what'd you do to this? I'm one of nine. I go in, I do my research, I read the materials, I talk to people involved, and I make the best decision I can with each thing that comes across our desk.
Yeah. That was very nice.
And remember, Luke, I was the one that was not going to follow the rules in your opening statement. Bottom line, you know, I was provided an education by the adult population in our community. This is all about the kids, and the students. I don't, we're here, we have a responsibility to them. Certainly, we have a responsibility to our community, being fiscally intelligent throughout the entire thing. But in my opinion, we're here, we have a responsibility. The kids are what it's all about. Whether it be in the classroom, the extended classroom, with the activities that they do after school, that's just going to promote community. You look at our football team this year, you know, because of the successes and everything that they had, it brought our community together. You go to the musicals that they have at the middle school, the high school, it brings our community together. The Titusville Area School District is a huge portion of our community. I think it's one in the same.
He copied off my paper. I said, I'm a representative for kids. That's the bottom part.
I need to see you after class.
I also believe that I represent the students. I also represent the teachers. I also represent parents, grandparents, the community, the taxpayers, the businesses, the coaches. When you look at it, we're representing everyone and everything in order to give success to our children.
I'm good with my original answer.
Yeah, you're good. So I think...
A minute and 55 seconds left, okay.
I think you get the last question. One more question, and then we'll do the closing statements. So, we've got a lot of really fantastic answers tonight. There seems to be a lot of moving pieces to education. So, on the public side of things, what can the public do to get involved in education, whether they have kids or they don't? And the flip side, what can faculty, staff, teachers, administrators do to also get involved in the community?
Well, I think the public can get involved just by supporting what they do. Go to the sporting events, go to the musicals, as I said, go, go support them. I mean, fill the auditorium up, fill the, you know, fill the gymnasiums up. It's just so wonderful, like Jim mentioned earlier, when you have a team that's doing really well, people come out. I mean, it's nice to be a winner. But also support us when we're not winning so much. You know, the kids need the support. How can the teachers, I think the teachers are supporting our kids phenomenally. I mean, I see the work and the hours that these teachers and staff put in. I mean, they're proud of what they do, they're proud of their buildings, they're proud of what they do as a team together. The administration's the same way. I mean, I think, I don't think we could ask for better teachers. I mean, I'm getting involved a little bit with MCL out there, and just being out there at some of those meetings, it's like, oh my gosh, I, the teacher, you could see the teachers, they just love what they're doing, and they're putting in time. It's a job, but it's a career, but it's something, it's a passion. And we need that. And I see that, and I see that, like you say, in our staff, in our teachers, and especially the administration as well. So, we've got the public, we've got the teachers. Who else?
That's good.
Okay, that's good.
The question, could you repeat the question?
Sure. It was, it was made up, Dwight.
Can you play that back, Mark?
Yeah. I'll do a sound check on that. No, the question was, what can the community do to get involved in local education? And what can folks in education, faculty, staff, you know, teachers, what can they do to help get involved in the community?
Well, I think we just addressed it. There is no divide. Get over that divide. Most of our teachers, most of, live in our community. So, they're part of the community. And I see them, they're very active. I think it was Kevin mentioned here, be informed, be involved. Go to the meetings, ask questions, get on commissions. We have, you know, subboards that help run our public school. Some of the people in here have done that. You know, when we have planning issues and long-range planning, get involved. I think most, the public, if they step up, they usually, we find a position for them to help us out, and take their opinion. Same thing with the teachers. I think the educators just have to continue to be part of the community, and also have those expectations that students will succeed. And that no matter what their last name is, or where they live, they can succeed. Have an, let them be an open book, not a repetition of their brothers, sisters, or mothers and fathers. And that's important. It's human nature to do that, and we're in a small community. Research would tell us that that's going to happen, but we have to be stronger than us educators to find that student and bring him out, so that they will become a productive member of society.
How can the community be more supportive of the school? I think our community is very supportive of our schools. You look at, you know, from the world that I've been in over the last 14 years in athletics, well, actually, the last 35 years, the support that comes from our community for our athletes, our clubs, our activities with student council, there are a lot of people that are working really hard to make things a positive experience for the kids in Titusville area. Be a little bit, maybe be a little bit more cognizant of the things that are going on, as we talked about real early in the evening, you know, what's the state legislature doing? You know, talk to your legislators, help us when you see something that just seems to be out of whack. Talk to them a little bit. How can the school employees be more involved in the community? But I tell you, I live in a, in a, in a world of a wife that teaches in the elementary, and I know them. They are dedicated to everything that they do, every elementary teacher, every high school teacher, every custodian, every secretary, cafeteria worker, they are doing things that most people don't even realize that they do for our kids. And maybe that's one thing that we need to do a better job, is promote ourselves. We don't like to do that. It's a difficult thing for us in education, but maybe that's something that we can do to show the community how much that every teacher, every day, every secretary, every worker, I don't care who it is, from the person at the ECLC through the high school, they all give everything that they have for our students.
In a nutshell, I would say volunteer. The community, the schools can always use volunteers to work with students, and I would say to staff, go out and volunteer in the community. It's a two-way street. If everybody does it, you have a great relationship.
I must say, I love this community. I feel really blessed that my children and grandchildren have the educators that they do. We really have A-plus educators, and that goes all the way down, as someone said, to our custodians, the bus drivers, really, it's a great community. And if anything for parents to do, perhaps they could contact the state and our legislators, and get more state funding for our local area. I think that the community does respond. I see them at ball games, basketball games, football games, plays. I see them at the arts, when the art displays come up, chorus, and band, and we have instrumental programs that I have not seen anywhere. They're really tremendous. I think we do an excellent job in our community, and I think the teachers are to be commended, as is the board that we have now, and also our administration. So I thank them all.
So I think we'll kind of all start to repeat ourselves here, but I think as the public, the first thing you can do is attend events, and my wife will probably kind of be upset for me saying this, but when the kids approach you about a fundraiser, buy it, whether you like it or not. You know, we've got nieces and nephews, and I swear every week, we're getting hit up to buy something, and we've always had the approach, if they ask us, we buy it, and I would just encourage the community to do that. You know, we talk about all the extra things that kids do, those fundraisers, you know, the $5, $10, and $20 goes a long way. So I would say the public, continue to support that. As the school and the teachers, I would say everybody's pretty involved. I know we are a small church, we have three teachers there, and I swear, we see them doing all kinds of stuff and everywhere. So I, I think we've got, I think that as a community, as a district, there's plenty of places where everybody's involved, and I think we do a fine job there.
All right. Hand the mic over. And now, you want to start again?
Oh, yeah.
We weren't, we weren't taping, we were just gonna, that was, that was run-through, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So.
Closing?
Closing. Let's do the closing statements. Two minutes.
In closing, my name is Dwight Proper. I'm very dedicated to this community. I'm dedicated to learning myself, and helping others to develop as people and human beings. And I think I'm a caring, giving person, and I'm asking you for your vote in the primary and in the general election. I want to continue some of the things that I started. I am very passionate about public education. I put a lot more time into it than people think. Jake, it's more than two meetings a month. And Shaw, in case you didn't know, it's a little more than two meetings a month. It's two official meetings. You could do it any way you want to. I give it 100%. That's all I have, and that's how I get behind things. So, please vote for me. So please vote for me.
Vote. Get out and vote. With people on TV or whatever, get out and vote. I would love to continue on with what I've been doing, working forward to keep doing the things that we've put in place. But we also have new people, new blood wanting to come on board. Listen to what you hear all of us say. I mean, it's nice to have veterans, it's nice to have new people, it's nice to have young people, it's nice to have people who, who aren't so young, but they want to get involved, okay? But that's a choice that you have to make. It's, it, the one thing about the board is dynamic. There's nine people on it, along with the superintendent, and we're a team of 10. It's nice to have a good cross-section of the community. I think everyone here has some great talents to offer, but I mean, again, I'd love to see it another four years. So I'm pleased asking for your vote. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to wrap it up, I know there's a, there's kind of a disconnect sometimes with, with the voting structure, and a lot of the public only thinks you only go out and vote every four years. But I would tell you that it's, it's important to you in a small community to vote on the years where a president's not being elected. This is the most important time to go out and vote. And when I was, when I was 25 years old, I was introduced to a guy by the name of Terry Stover. And he got me, got me really excited about what was going on, and not only the local community and Crawford County of the Republican group, and at that point in time, the presidential election that we were seeing. And I'll never forget that guy, you know, telling me, you know, on the odd years, like, man, you, you beat the doors and you get people. And that was one of the main reasons I became involved with the Republican Party here in Crawford County. And one of the reasons, I only filed as Republican. So there's, you know, this weird quirk in a school board that you can cross-file. I'm a registered Republican, and I'll stand on that platform. And so I only filed as Republican. And I would ask you, you know, to vote for me. And I think when you look at the school district, things are going really well. I don't think anybody up here would do a bad job. I think you've got a great group of people that would be running and, and truly care about the community. But the only way a, a community progresses, the only way an organization progresses, is that new influx of ideas, that new influx of energy. And I think I can bring that to the table. So I'll ask you to vote for me here in a week, and hopefully again in the fall, all right?
I definitely am committed to the academic success of your children and your grandchildren. I believe in public education and that every student deserves a quality education with rigorous classes. I believe in educational technology and opportunities, definitely in art, music, band, drama, instrumentals, and sports. I believe in project-based learning and hands-on learning. I also believe in the VOTAC. I believe that students should have the opportunity to seek credits in high school while, college credits, excuse me, while they're still in high school. I care about what's best for the students and for the educators and the community. I have a creative mind. I am dedicated. I work hard. I also think I have integrity on many situations that may come up, that may need that particular quality. And again, I'm all about education and student success. In closing, I definitely would appreciate your vote on May 16th. I promise you, I will do a good job.
First of all, I'd like to thank our live audience for sitting with us this evening. It's very helpful to have faces to look out at. I would secondly say, I'm all for kids. And I'd thirdly, go out and vote.
Thank you, Chamber, for putting this on, and all of you for being here tonight, and anybody in the public that tunes into the stream here when it's broadcasted. I just want to give back to the community. There's no hidden agenda or anything. Like I said at, in the beginning, I, 20-some years ago, there were so many people that led me into a path that, to work for this community. That's what I want to do. I have a passion for the school district. You know, it's been my whole entire life. And I would appreciate that when you go out to vote next Tuesday, May 16th, that you flip my name on the ballot. I'll work hard. Two people pretty much taught me how to do that, my mother and a guy named Ed Meyer. For all of you that know, you show up a half hour before time is on time. I will work hard. I will be dedicated. I will not be afraid to put in the time that it takes to, to do the job the proper way. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you guys for joining us here this evening. There are refreshments?
Wouldn't be the first, Mike, ever.
Thank you again for all of you to came tonight to participate with us. And thank you for being here to see our candidates for school board. We're gonna take a quick moment and kind of reset and get ready to talk to our candidates for city council. So you're welcome to stick around, have snacks, and we'll switch gears and be right with you.